And then on April 16th, we'll be having the mayoral candidates debate and there will be four candidates in that forum. However, appropriately, on April 2nd, between all of this excitement with the debates, we'll be having a program with Dr. Manuel Pastor, who is the director of the Center of Justice, Tolerance, and Community at the University of California at Santa Cruz. And if you remember Dr. Robert Putnam's talk recently on getting together, he talked about the need for community engagement. Uh, Dr. Pastor will talk about the connection between community building and community bridging. He's a vibrant speaker and a notable author. He's going to present a plan of action for how to do that. Now, I see that there are a lot of new faces here, and I'd like to tell those of you who don't know that the City Club is having its annual spring membership drive and would like to invite any of you who have, are not members to join. The opportunity to do so is on the tables, there are membership, uh, applications there, and it's really easy to get in. We do have a... And if you join today... Thank you. If we join, if you join today, we'll put your name into, uh, raffle for this week's drawing of a big basket of Oregon wines, which is courtesy of the Oregon Agribusiness Council. Now, this coming Monday on March 29th, the club's book discussion group will be meeting at Zimmerman Community Center in our Citizens Read programs. This month's selection was Jewel Lansing's Portland People, Politics, and Power, and it will be moderated by Mike Burton. Should be very interesting. And if you want to get a head start on April's selection, it's Richard Florida's The Rise of the Creative Class. Both books are available for purchase in the lobby as you leave. And also next week, we have a couple of interesting events organized by the City Club's New Leaders Council. On Tuesday, March 30th, we'll have the first of a two-part dialogue on Coming to America, which looks at refugees in Portland. And on Wednesday, March 31st, the New Leaders Council and the Multnomah Bar Association Young Lawyers Team... Oh, that's really wrong. Uh, the Multnomah Bar Association Young Lawyers team up for a young professionals networking social. And if I were younger, I might have read it right, and I don't know what their definition of young is, so if you are at heart, you're welcome, I'm sure. Uh, you can check the bulletin or the City Club's website for more information about all of the events and to register for upcoming Friday forums. The broadcast of City Club programs this quarter is made possible, don't you always think of Masterpiece Theater Music? It's made possible in part by corporate underwriting from Kaiser Permanente, Pope and Talbot, and Shorebank Pacific, and we are very grateful for their contributions to keep the broadcast going. Today, our moderator will be Dr. Peter Steinberger, who is currently the dean of faculty at Reed, and he was acting president during the 2001-2002 academic year. He teaches in the Department of Political Science at Reed College, and, uh, he received his BA and his masters from Fordham University and his PhD from University of California at Riverside. He's also the author of several books. He will introduce the candidates and outline the rules of engagement. Nikki Lynch is a member of the Board of Directors, and she's chair of the Program Committee, and she will be the Task Mistress of Time. And seated at this table are, at Time, she's holding up the Time card. Seated at this table are Patty Tillett, past president of the club. Um, I don't see Tamsin, perhaps Tamsin is not here yet. Ah, and she is wending her way rapidly through the group. Tamsin Wasselin, aside from being a little bit late to this seat, is First Vice President and Chair of Research Board, and Chris Smith is a member of the Board of Governors and the Chair of the Advocacy Committee. Uh, they are the City Club's answer to the no-spin zone. They will provide actionable intelligence by raising question mark cards should they think that a question has not been adequately answered.
(applause)
Yes, we do, that's, Nick got ahead of me there. In fact, uh, if there are two questions raised, then the candidate who spun, or perhaps didn't answer quite as much as they would like, will have 30 seconds to correct this oversight. Um, so I'd like to introduce now Dr. Peter Steinberger, who will tell you how this whole debate will work today.
Thanks, Coraline. So the debate will have several sections. First, each candidate will give a three-minute opening statement. A coin toss determine the order of appearance in the debate. Following the opening statements, candidates will respond to questions suggested in advance by City Club members. The City Club's Program Committee compose the final set of questions. These are the only questions which will be asked today, there will be no questions from the floor. We will rely on the judgment of our distinguished panel of City Club directors over there to decide whether or not the questions have indeed been answered by the candidates. If two or more of these board members raise their cards indicating that they feel the question has not been answered, I will restate the question and ask the candidate to reply again. Following the City Club's questions, each candidate will have the opportunity to ask three cross questions of the other. Following the rotation of candidate questions, each candidate will make a three-minute closing statement. Please be respectful, no hissing, no booing, no clapping, no name-calling will be allowed. Please hold all applause until the end of the program. Sam Adams entered politics as an intern for Peter DeFazio, then Chair of the Lane County Board of Commissioners. He went on to serve as Press Secretary for Representative DeFazio's successful 1984 congressional race. After filling a position with the Democratic House Campaign Committee, Sam went on to manage the successful election campaign of Portland Mayor Vera Katz, and subsequently served as her Chief of Staff until last fall. Sam and his partner live in the Kenton neighborhood of North Portland. Nick Fish has 17 years' experience as a labor and employment attorney. He is currently, uh, counsel to the Meyer and Weiss Law Firm. He is a founding member and chair of the Advisory Panel of the Mark Hatfield School of Government at Portland State University and the former vice-chair of the Housing Authority of Portland. He lives in northeast Portland with his wife and two children. I'd now like to ask the candidates to approach their podiums, and we will begin with the opening statements. We will begin with an opening statement from Sam Adams, followed by Nick Fish.
Where do I go?
You go and I'll push the button.
Okay, thank you. After many years of attending City Club, I must say that it's very strange for me to be on this side of the podium. I'm used to working behind the scenes, so forgive me if I seem a little nervous or awkward. I do look forward to the end of this afternoon when I can say that I'm no longer a City Club debate virgin.
Yeah.
But nervous or not, uh, rest assured that my words are heartfelt, and the first words I'd like to, to make are a big thank you to my former boss Vera Katz. I don't know of anyone who has shown more love and dedication and commitment to the people of Portland and to Oregon. And on a personal note, she gave me one of the greatest opportunities I could ever ask for in terms of community service, and an even greater opportunity to become a friend. And I want, I want her to know, although she is not here today, how much I appreciate that. Um, I worked hard to make the most of the public service, um, opportunity that she gave me, and through my work with nearly a half dozen nonprofit organizations that I've been part of, um, and I think it is a key difference in this race. Um, Nick and I will both talk about jobs and the importance of strengthening the economy, as well we should. The difference is, is that I rolled up my sleeves and worked side-by-side with businesses to keep and to bring hundreds of jobs to Portland. And recognizing early on in the 90s how Portland is unfriendly to business, I'm the first candidate in this race to propose detailed tax and regulatory changes that will get our economy back on track. We will both talk about the value of schools, and well we should. The difference is that over the past decade, time and time again, I voluntarily took a leadership role to help address Portland's many school funding crises, and there have been so many, to help prevent hundreds of teacher layoffs, to hold class sizes down, and to maintain a full school year. Today, closing the shameful academic achievement gap is the centerpiece of my campaign, and I'm proud to be endorsed by the African-American Alliance. We both talk about changing government in terms of its cost and culture. The difference is that I have actually succe, had success at changing it. Finding $30 million in administrative savings and, in savings and cutting red tape. And I'm the only candidate so far who has set a goal of cutting an additional $10 to $15 million of waste from city government, and the only candidate who has proposed detailed reforms to the city's incestuous budget process. You'll notice that I've said "change" a lot. As a staffer, I worked hard to change city government, but I'm running for City Council because there are many things that you can only do as a member of the City Council. Why is this important to me? I come from a family of modest means, who struggled to get through some tough time. My mom has inspired me to keep going, as has my partner Greg Eddy, and I'd like you to stand up and introduce you to my mom. That's Greg Eddy, welcome them. For me, being a city commissioner isn't a career move, it's a, my passion comes from the life experience that I've had thus far. I'm asking for your votes so that I can take that experience and put it to work for all of Portland. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nick Fish, and I'd like to thank the City Club for hosting this debate, and I'm honored to stand here as a candidate for public office. I'd like to acknowledge one person in the audience today. Nine years ago, my wife accepted a position at Portland State University, and we moved our family west to support her career. 11 weeks ago, she gave birth to our second child and our first Oregonian. And today is her 40th birthday. Happy birthday, Patty. Most of us living in Portland today were not born here. What attracted us to this city was Portland's national reputation as a livable city. Strong schools, great neighborhoods, engaged citizens, and progressive thinking. Today, my family proudly calls Portland our home. Patty, the daughter of a Spanish immigrant, and the first woman in her family, on her mother's side of the family, to go to high school, is a professor of history at Portland State University. Our daughter is a fifth grader in Portland Public Schools. She is fluent in Spanish, she loves to play soccer, and she's starting an all-girl rock and roll band. I've continued my work as a lawyer, defending employees from illegal, uh, termination and discrimination, and helping small businesses and nonprofits succeed. We've been very fortunate in our move west. The city we love, however, has lost its swagger and faces many challenges. Portland has lost too many family wage jobs and corporate headquarters, and has earned a reputation as a tough place to do business. Portland's celebrated experiment in citizen participation in government has grown stale, while too many important decisions are made behind closed doors. And I talk to people throughout this city who do not believe that City Hall shares their priorities. It's time for a change, and that's why I'm running for Portland City Council. This May, Portlanders can change the direction of this city by electing new leadership with the right priorities to City Hall. I want to be part of this historic opportunity. I will lead the effort to retain and grow family wage jobs in our community. I understand that quality of life begins with a job. I have 17 years of experience in the, in the small business world. I have firsthand experience meeting a payroll, paying taxes, and dealing with government bureaucracy. I will strive to reconnect people to their government. As Robert Putnam recently reminded us, we are better together. In all of my community service, as a neighborhood leader, as an advocate for affordable housing and childcare, and as a supporter of legal services for the poor, I have a proven record of bringing people together to get results. And I will work to change the priorities in City Hall, insisting that we fund basic services first, before we invest taxpayer dollars in expensive pet projects like PGE Park and baseball. With your help, I will bring common sense, pragmatic leadership to Portland City Council. Thank you very much.
We now move to the portion of the program where I ask the questions, prepared in advance by the City Club members. Each candidate will have 60 seconds to respond to the question. Following each answer, the opposing candidate will have the option of a 45-second rebuttal. The candidates have not seen these questions in advance. So first, question for Adams. Critics of Portland City Council say that the public is shut out of key policy decisions because deals are made behind the scenes and because it is considered poor form for one commissioner to intrude on another's bureau. To what extent is this currently true in Portland, and what would you do to open up the city's decision-making process?
Well, on my website, you can see in great detail that I've, I've not only called the current city, uh, budget process politically incestuous, but I've called for some major reforms. First off, this city needs a strategic plan. It's a $1.74 billion corporation that budgets out of its back pocket. Second thing, we need to add five members from the public to the Budget Committee, so it isn't just commissioners talking to each other, so that the public can ask the tough questions about what's going on with PGE Park, what's happening with redo of the, of the Waterbury Billing System. From that, we need to go into zero-based budgeting to find out what programs are really working and which programs are not working. And sometimes a zero-based budgeting needs to cross city and county lines. We need to look at all public safety expenditures, for instance. It's the most sacred responsibility that local government has, and find out how we can find savings within the hundreds of millions of dollars spent on that to open the Wapato Jail and to fund the 57 police officer positions that are currently vacant. The budget is key, not only to how the money is spent, it's the work plan for the city, and it needs a lot more attention and a lot more public involvement.
We have two objections. You have 30 seconds to make, um, a further response.
Well, you have to ask the question again.
Critics of Portland City Council say that the public is shut out of key policy decisions because deals are made behind the scenes and because it is considered poor form for one commissioner to intrude in another's bureau. To what extent is this currently true in Portland, and what would you do to open up the city's decision-making process?
Well, in addition to what I've already described, I would also make sure that before bureaus even put together their scratch budgets, before they're even approved by the bureaus in charge, that the, that the bureaus in this city sit down with each neighborhood, each neighborhood district of the city, and show them what they intend to do in each of their neighborhoods, and ask for feedback on that, um, before they put, turn in their budget requests. That combined with putting citizens on the Budget Committee will open the doors to the budget-making process of the city, and it's in the budget-making process where most of these deals happen behind closed doors.
Thank you. Mr. Fish, you have a, a option of a 45-second rebuttal.
Thank you. The answer to your question is yes. Too many deals are made behind closed doors, and that's one of the reasons I'm running. I said in my announcement, let's throw open the doors of City Hall and let a fresh breeze in. We do best when we do it with sunlight. The Armory Deal, PGE Park, baseball, the reservoirs, all of those decisions would have benefited from more public input. I'm committed to getting the public back into the public process, and it starts by actually reaching out to people and inviting them in City Hall. Too many people in our community, from labor and business to the neighborhoods, feel the door of City Hall is closed to them. The only way we can change that is elect people who really want to build those partnerships, bring people in, and build a better Portland.
Question for Mr. Fish. Some Portland businesses complain that the city's business license and income taxes are too high, unfair, and uncompetitive. Is this a real problem? What changes, if any, would you work to enact?
Um, it is. It's, it puts us in a non-competitive position with the surrounding jurisdiction, and they're right. But you can't look at the business license fee in isolation. You have to look at all the other taxes, levies, fees, and charges which discourage job growth in our community. We have the second highest combined water and sewer rates in the country. We have a regulatory system which imposes hidden taxes. Um, we have a school system currently which is in some distress, which is discouraging jobs from moving here, businesses from moving here. We've earned a, a reputation as a tough place to do business, which has now been memorialized in Ink Magazine, which lists us as one of the 10 worst places to do business in America. That's the kind of news we don't need. I would support reforming the business license fee by increasing the owner's compensation deduction this year to $75,000, next year to $100,000. I think that sends a signal to the business community that we're serious about tax reform.
You have the option of a 45-second rebuttal.
Um, I too would agree with, uh, raising the owner's compensation deduction to $125,000 within the next three years. Um, I'd also like to see the possibility of raising the overall rate as well, because you have two different types of businesses that benefit from those two different actions. Um, I also would like to see, and there's this, and there are a lot of sort of quiet taxes in the city. One of the most egregious is the franchise fee that the city is charging on the CSO rates, uh, the combined sewer overflow rates, which are going sky-high to deal with the state and federal mandate. The city has a percentage tax on that. It's a quiet tax, it's an unfair tax, and it needs to be reduced.
Question for Mr. Adams. What form of citizen review of police conduct do you favor?
You know, at the end of this calendar year, it will have been three years of experience with IPR, and I think that it's time for an independent audit of what's working and what's not working. Um, a lot of people have opinions, there are some statistics that we can rely on to have evidence of that, but like the park report, I thought was a very useful outside review of, uh, police actions as it relates to the use of deadly force. I think a park-like, out, park-like report for the IPR to give us a factual basis to fix what's working, excuse me, fix what's not working, and to build on what is working. Um, I think it's important that, uh, people can expect a review process that is timely, fair, um, to everyone involved, um, and that, uh, it helps lead to constant reform and constant improvement of police and law enforcement services.
You have the option, Mr. Fish, of a 45-second rebuttal.
On this one, I'm going to agree with Sam and just add an additional comment. If we're serious about reforming the oversight process, we also have to be serious about funding public safety. We have starved public safety in our community over the last five years, and we've paid a dear price for it. There is no coincidence in the fact that gang activity is up, property crimes are up, and people feel less secure in their neighborhoods, when we have not filled 53 positions in our police bureau, and we've cut back on essential services in our fire bureau. I will fight for proper oversight of our people who wear the uniform, but I'll also fight for the resources they need to do their job.
Question for Mr. Fish. Few subjects ignite the passions of Portland's park lovers as much as off-leash dogs... (laughter) ...and covering reservoirs. Should dogs run free? Do we really need to spend all that money covering our parks' water elements? Where do you stand now on these issues, and how would you work to help reduce community tensions around them?
Well, first of all, I think we need to have perspective on this issue. And I've said this to people on both sides of the dog issue. Uh... We, uh, we had the ambassador for hunger in town a couple of weeks ago, and he spoke at a couple of events, and he reminded us that today 25,000 people will die globally of malnutrition and hunger. I think when we think about a statistic like that, it helps us put in perspective the issue of dogs. I mean, it's an important issue, but it isn't the most important issue we face. My flip answer is I've already decided to assign the diplomat on the City Council to deal with this issue, and Randy Leonard has agreed to meet with both sides. (laughter) And I think two meetings with Randy, I think we can probably cure it, or at the very least, there'll be no further need for meetings. Uh...
He better get his rabies shot.
Time?
What was the question again? Cause I, I'm, I'm tempted...
Oh, you, you have not satisfied any of the judges. (laughter) Few subjects, few subjects ignite the passions of Portland's park lovers as much as off-leash dogs and covering reservoirs. Should dogs run free? Do we really need to spend all that money covering our parks' water elements? Where do you stand now on these issues, and how would you work to help reduce community tensions around these issues? You have 30 seconds.
Thank you again for the question, very thoughtful question, and my answer is yes and no, but I want to be very clear. Uh, the community tension issue is largely a question of engaging people. We have not did a, done a good job in the city listening to neighborhood concerns, and that's why we have the flare-up over the tram, over the reservoir, over dogs, over all kinds of things. So I'd start by listening to people, but with respect to the dog issue, I'd like to see more parks set aside as dedicated parks where dogs can run free. I'd like to make sure the hours are more appropriate to working people's lives so that they can actually have... Time?
You have the option, Mr. Adams, of a 45-second rebuttal.
Well, looking at the panel here, I believe in covering dogs and letting reservoirs run free. And if you raise that damn question mark again, I swear, I have a glass here. Um, actually, the first week as a candidate, I, uh, I, I met with my former boss and Commissioner Saltzman, and I informed them that I would not be supporting covering the reservoirs in the manner that it had done up, had gone up to that point. I felt that, that there wasn't enough public involvement, I felt that there wasn't enough independent oversight, and in fact, I've, not picking on just reservoirs, I've called for, uh, independent oversight of all major proposed expenditures by the city. I think that we can, um, we, we stand a good, a better chance with some independent oversight of preventing things like PGE Park, and I'm glad that Commissioner Saltzman has, has done exactly that.
Question for Mr. Adams.
Yes.
Last spring, the city funded schools to stay open for the full year, and it intervened in labor negotiations to prevent a teacher's strike. Were these actions appropriate? Looking forward, what role should the city have with respect to public school funding and quality?
Um, it was absolutely appropriate. Um, it, you know, you, we've got to walk our talk in terms of is education the number one concern of this city or not? And for me, you know, it is. Um, it's education that has, uh, risen my family up to economic stability, um, so I think it was appropriate. I must say, however, that, uh, the agreement made as part of the negotiations, sort of the triumvirate of negotiations, has to be fulfilled. Uh, teacher salaries do need to be addressed, but the costs of healthcare also need to be addressed. And I was asked the other day, if they weren't addressed, would I support, you know, re-upping 2648? And my answer is no, I would not.
Mr. Fish, you have the option of a 45-second rebuttal.
I've been an advocate for kids in schools, and I intend to be the education act, advocate on City Council. My priorities are very clear. I'd like to expand affordable before and after-care programs for working families, expand the son-school program, and fight for stable and adequate funding for our schools. For me, our kids and your kids always go to the head of the line. Now, Vera Katz has always understood that Portland's future depended on good, strong schools, and she deserves our gratitude. When Salem failed to deliver on adequate and stable funding, Multnomah County and Portland had no choice but to act. I supported the three-year temporary bridge funding. However, now is the time for the legislature to step up. They cannot continue to fail our children.
Question for Mr. Fish. City Club's report on affordable housing in Portland recommends the creation of long-term rental vouchers to be funded in part by a new real estate transfer tax. To what extent do you support these recommendations over the more typical approach of construction subsidies? How would you work to increase funding for affordable housing?
Well, I have, um, the benefit of having served with the wonderful people of the Housing Authority of Portland the last four years, trying to solve this problem. Over that period, we added 1,000 units of affordable housing to the inventory, but it doesn't make a dent in the overall need. We have 17,000 units of affordable housing, uh, that, that are still necessary. Too many people of color in our community can't buy a home, and gentrification is pushing seniors, renters, and first-time homeowners out of their neighborhood. Ernie Bonner has been a great champion of the voucher concept. We use vouchers at the Housing Authority through Section 8. I like the idea because it brings immediate, uh, help to people by using existing market mechanisms. I think there can be a balance. Vouchers that the city subsidizes and continuing to follow Eric Stan's lead in building affordable housing in our community.
Mr. Adams, you have the option of a 45-second rebuttal.
Well, I don't think it's an either-or, I think we have to, uh, support both, cause they target different populations. Um, but housing, housing, uh, funding is in crisis. We're expecting a 6% cut from the federal government, um, in terms of block grant allocations, and the city's housing investment fund is pretty well used up. I do support finding $30 million over the next five years that would refund, resupply the city's housing investment fund. I think we can do it, um, in two, uh, bond, uh, internal bond, uh, issuances for the city and pay it off by finding savings within city government itself, and also using the proceeds that'll be coming in above what the city has forecasted as the economy rises. This is a vital, how, affordable housing is a vital component to getting our economic engine fired up and moving forward.
Question for Mr. Adams. Design is a word that receives a lot of attention in Portland. How would you support Portland's distinction for quality urban design while also responding to criticisms that the city's planning and permitting processes are too complicated, too expensive, and too time-consuming?
Well, you know, I was raised by an architect, my mother's an architect, so I better answer this. She probably has her own, her own thing to, to raise up, her own question mark. Um, clearly, regulatory, uh, what I found is, in terms of, of, of trying to jump-start regulatory reform a year ago after Charlie's Hales quit the, uh, the, the City Council, is that our regulations, there are so many regulations on the books that are, although well-intentioned, are outmoded, or contradictory, that really stand in the way of really good creative design. And I do think the design is vitally important because, you know, uh, former Mayor Gussie McRoberts of Gresham used to say, "Density's not the problem, design is." And I've seen it time and time again where neighborhoods will embrace very dense projects... And I've seen it time and time again where neighborhoods will embrace very dense projects if they're well-designed, if they provide amenities to the neighborhood, if they're thoughtful. So design is critically important, and I think regulatory reform can help get some of the most onerous and ill-conceived regulations out of the way.
You have the option of a 45-second rebuttal.
Thank you. Portland has a great history of studying regulatory reform on a regular basis, commissioning a study, and then putting it on a shelf. I think what we've learned in the last two years, that the way you get regulatory reform in this city is to have strong leadership. And I think we ought to tip our hat to what Randy Leonard has done at the Bureau of Development Services. He has met regularly with industry to talk about how to improve the bureau. He has brought citizen review into the process. He has given it strong leadership, and he's getting great marks from the people who interact with that bureau. And I think that tells us that strong leadership, not more study, is how you get things done in this city.
Question for Mr. Fish. Portland has an increasing problem with freight mobility, the ability to move freight through the metropolitan area. How would you address this issue?
I remember you had a debate two years ago where you asked a candidate a similar question, and he was loath to say the T-word. But the fact is, our biggest problem here is a question of resources. We have 600 miles of backlog, street repairs and maintenance. We have potholes. We have a system that's broken, and we don't have a way to fund it. Now, clearly, it's the legislature's primary obligation to provide the funding, and they've dropped the ball. They haven't given us a gas tax increase since 1993. The city council tried to come up with an alternative funding scheme called a Street Maintenance Improvement Fee, and that failed when the business community pulled its support. So I've got a couple of additional ideas. One is, let's ask if we can have a local option to put a local increase on the registration fee. We have a very low registration fee in this state, and if we in Portland could add to that, I think we could generate some of the revenues we need to tackle the backlog. But without the money, we can't kid ourselves, we're not going to fix this problem.
Mr. Adams, you have the option of a 45-second rebuttal.
Well, before we rush to propose a new fee or a tax, I think that we need to do some really thorough review of where transportation dollars are currently being spent, not only in the city but in the region. I think it's time for a cross-jurisdictional zero-based budget review of transportation expenditures. At the same time, there's been a Blue Ribbon Committee and Panel to learn in detail exactly what the problem is related to freight mobility. We know two issues are really important. One, separation of road and rail grade crossings. Important for safety, important for freight mobility. And the second is to develop a freight mobility system that is intelligent, that uses some of the reader boards and navigational systems that you see on freeways. If you've ever been to the Northwest Industrial Area, many days at 5:00, they have their own problems with gridlock.
Thank you. Question for Mr. Adams. Let's assume that bureau assignments remain unchanged when you're elected, so you have responsibility for the Parks and Transportation bureaus. Tell us specifically how you would use your authority over those bureaus to further strategic citywide priorities, such as reducing gang violence or supporting economic development?
Parks and Transportation, gang violence, and economic development. Parks plays a pivotal role in before-and-after school programs related to providing wholesome and healthy opportunities for youth and youth at risk. Those programs, when combined with school programs and county programs, on a pilot basis, we know have done some really amazing things, some really, really good work. So I would continue that effort and expand the pilot work that's currently underway. On transportation, it's a key role in economic development. Freight mobility is an important issue. Portland's economy is more dependent on transportation-related industries than any other city in the United States except for, I think, Miami and Atlanta. And yet, we know from trends that we're going to see 100% increase in freight truck traffic on the West Coast, and we're not ready for it. And that's why freight mobility has to be part of any economic turnaround plan for the city.
You have the option of a 45-second rebuttal.
You know, I too have focused on before-and-after care programs in our parks, and what I'd like to do is partner with existing nonprofits like the Boys and Girls Clubs and other providers, Portland Public Schools, and use our community centers the way the SUN School program uses our schools. We also need to expand our parkland. You know, we have, in the last 30 years, increased our population by 50%. We've expanded our parks by 5%. And where we're really shortchanging people is low-income people in affordable housing throughout the city. With respect to transportation, I would support what I believe is the best municipal investment the country's ever seen, which is called the streetcar. The Portland Streetcar has leveraged more private investment than any other investment in this community, and I would help to move it to the east side.
Thank you. This is the final question of this part of the debate. Question for Mr. Fish. Current city officials have said that improving the business climate is one of the highest priorities. Is any real progress being made? Is the city approaching this in the best way?
Look, it's easy to be a Monday morning quarterback. I'll tell you what I want to do when I'm on council. I want to build on Portland's existing strengths. I'd start with the 43,000 neighborhood small businesses, which are the backbone of our community. As I said earlier, I'd increase the owner's compensation deduction this year. I'd reduce water and sewer charges by opposing the unnecessary burial of reservoirs in Mount Tabor, and I will not support putting a filtration plant on Palbute. I'll work to see that unnecessary and burdensome development fees that prevent businesses from expanding are reduced, and there will be no more Columbia Sportswears on my watch. The next time a good corporate citizen wants to relocate in Portland, I'll personally roll out the welcome mat and not run them out of town.
You have the option of a 45-second rebuttal.
We need to invigorate the public-private and nonprofit partnership that has built everything great, almost everything great, that makes Portland special. As much as I love my former boss, I vehemently disagree with her when she says that Portland's reputation as an unfriendly place to do business is an urban myth. It's not. Having worked on regulatory reform before Commissioner Leonard, having worked on tax reform, I can tell you, with the best of intentions, the city of Portland does have unnecessary barriers to desirable business investment and reinvestment in the city. And again, one of the differences up on this podium is that I've actually had some success at making changes at it.
Thank you. During this next portion of the program, each candidate will ask three questions of the other. Questions must be asked in 30 seconds. The opposing candidate will have one minute to respond, after which the questioner will have the option of a 30-second rebuttal. We will alternate between the candidates and begin with Nick Fish.
Do they get to use their question marks?
No.
Okay. Can I have a question mark there?
That's what the rebuttal, that's what the response is.
I know.
Mr. Fish, your first question for Mr. Adams.
Mr. Adams.
Yes.
What book has most influenced your thinking about Portland's future and why?
Oh, I would say Richard Florida's The Creative Class. Not only is it one of the most recent books that I've read, but I think it gives really good insight into the future of a successful regional economy here in Portland that relies on innovation and really underscores how important education is to the economy and why investments in OHSU and PSU and Portland Community College and ongoing labor and training programs are just so vital to the city's future. So The Creative Class is a book that has influenced me a great deal. I had the opportunity to meet Richard Florida last time he was here, and he gave us a lot of kudos, and I think also pointed out some of our vulnerabilities. For instance, our first effort at trying to boost the local creative services industry, you know, came at a time of a recession, didn't work out as well as we want. And I think in order for us to move forward in a more productive way, we need to have an honest and candid debrief of why our first efforts aren't working as well as we want and find out what it'll take to push forward.
Mr. Fish, you have the option of a 30-second rebuttal.
I think it's clear from his answer that I shared the question with him before this forum. That isn't good sportsmanship. I don't know what is. The book that's influenced me is Better Together, and Mr. Putnam took Portland by storm a couple of weeks ago. I think the interesting thing about his book is that he chronicles Portland's 30-year experiment with involving citizens in important decision-making, and it's what makes this city special. I think what's depressing about...
Thank you.
Wow.
30-second rebuttal.
That's harsh.
That's right.
It's just like being at city council.
Mr. Adams, your first question for Mr. Fish.
Nick, you've brought up PG Park as one of the problems the city is facing right now, and rightly so. The project didn't go very well. The mayor asked me, when it became clear that things weren't going well, to try to take it on and to see what I could do to fix it. I wasn't able to fix it before I left office. But what would you do, what are some of the specifics, recommendations that you would make to ensure that this thing doesn't happen in the future?
Well, first of all, I wouldn't have done the deal. And that was Metro's recommendation to you and to the mayor. Metro looked at other cities that had a similar baseball plan and determined it wasn't economically viable. This is a classic example of forgetting about all logic and all reason and pushing to an outcome you'd already decided you wanted to get to. For that plan to work, there was a projection you'd have to have 13,000 people in the stands for every game. That's just to pencil out. We don't get that many people to Blazers games anymore. Now, the other part of that, which I think is shameful, is that the city council, when they reviewed the PGE Park deal, agreed to sign a release and waived their right to see the financials of the deal. They waived their right to look at PFE's financials. I don't make a lot of commitments as a candidate that I can't keep, but this is one that I will make. I will never, as your city commissioner, vote on any issue that comes before the council and, in the process, waive my right to do the due diligence necessary to make an informed decision.
Thank you. Mr. Adams, you have the option of a 30-second rebuttal.
Well, the lessons I learned on PG Park was clearly the need to have budget reform and the need for, on major projects, especially public-private projects, and in this case, the city relied too much on the private sector to basically guard their own $14 million investment. But I would make sure that every major project that the city council is contemplating goes through some outside review and public review, that all of the information is shared with the public. It's absolutely vital. And that, you know, that we have accountability by making sure that major deals get major review.
Thank you. Mr. Fish, your second question for Mr. Adams.
Sam, the turnout in the May primary is expected to be below 50%. Why are people not voting in this city, and what can you and I do about it?
Good question. I would say to run the kind of campaigns we're both trying to run in terms of campaigns that are issue-oriented, that go beyond the buzzwords, campaigns that seek to inspire but also challenge people as well, and campaigns that are candid, campaigns that, candidates and campaigns that try to speak the truth about some of the vulnerabilities that we face. For instance, in this city, you know, 2 out of 10 families live in poverty. 16,000 kids tonight will go to sleep in poverty. We have 2 and 1/2 times the mortgage foreclosures than we had last year. The academic achievement gap in the city that I talked about is one of the most shameful things that this city has to live through, live in, and I'm not going to embrace any award for our livability until it's addressed. It breaks along the lines of race, ethnicity, and household income, and it has to change. And it has to be all of us working together to change it. It isn't just up to the school district. The city and the county and local governments can play an important part in that. And that's one of the reasons that I'm running for city office, is to focus on the real issues.
Thank you. You have the option of a 30-second rebuttal.
Sure. I think one of the reasons people aren't voting is they've lost trust in their government. And one of the reasons they've lost trust is too many deals are being done behind closed doors, and the public isn't being invited in in key decision-making. So I think we need to make fundamental change. The second is I applaud the work of the Bus Project and other folks trying to bring younger voters in. It's shameful that people in their 20s and 30s don't participate, and policy is skewed away from their interests. And third, we as elected officials have to set an example and vote in every election.
Thank you. Mr. Adams, your second question for Mr. Fish.
I want to ask a question about special interest. I was not endorsed by a lot of public unions because, as they sent me in words of an email, because I had cut union jobs as part of saving that $10 million in administrative services. $10 million on an ongoing basis, $30 million thus far, money that the city council has had on hand to use for more important essential services like police, fire, and others. I want to know what your position is, given that you've gotten all these endorsements and you do claim to be the change agent and the outsider. How are you going to really make it happen, given that you've got so many insiders supporting you?
That'll come as a surprise to a number of my supporters. Sam, I'll tell you what every single person and group that's endorsed me has said, and it's eerie in that it's so familiar and similar. From labor to the business community, to the neighborhood activists, to people throughout this city, they have told me they did not feel welcome in City Hall. The only commitment that I made was to open the door of City Hall and let them back in. From the realtors and the home builders, to the folks who are trying to make better communities in Mount Tabor, in Southwest, and throughout the city, to our friends in labor, both private sector and public sector, and I happen to think the public sector employees in this city are doing a hell of a job and ought to be congratulated for what they do, they know that I'll be an honest broker and that I will welcome them into decision-making. And for them, that will be a breath of fresh air.
Mr. Adams, you have the option of a 30-second rebuttal.
Well, the fact of the matter is, they said it themselves. You know, they're not supporting me because there are a handful of the 47 jobs that we did cut in administrative services that were union jobs. It's a simple fact. That's why I wasn't endorsed.
Mr. Fish, your third question for Mr. Adams.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Your third and final question.
If you don't have one, that's okay.
Sam, you said if you were in the race, you'd be supporting me. What did you mean by that?
Oh, I'm right behind you.
Sam, the city council recently voted to subsidize Portland Center Stage acquisition of the Armory and put a lot of public dollars on the table. How would you have voted on this issue and why?
Well, again, I'm not going to vote, I'm going to vote no on every major project that does not go through some outside review. I'm going to vote no on whether I like the project and I'm very supportive of the Armory project. You can expect from me on projects I like and dislike that I want outside review. I don't want to be held hostage to consultants that are paid for by bureaus. I don't want to be held hostage by staff who often, with the best of intentions, and the city of Portland has great staff, but with the best of intentions sometimes, momentum and excitement gets built up for a project. But before it comes to the city council for a vote, even on projects that I'm working on and support, it's got to go through some outside review. And that outside review needs to include expertise that oftentimes is lacking either among city staff or among our consultants or among the city council. I think this will be very healthy for all the major projects that we do. We do need to fortify the trust between city government and those people that are paying the bills, and I think this will help.
Mr. Fish, you have the option of a 30-second rebuttal.
Look, I'm a big supporter of the arts, but this is yet another example of a deal put together behind closed doors, which is not in the best public interest. I too would have voted no. I do not understand how the land adjacent to the Henry, which is the most expensive building in the state of Oregon, qualifies as a distressed area. And I think it is very unwise policy to obligate a future city council to be a guarantor to the extent of $10 million on any project that comes before us, no matter how worthy.
Mr. Adams, your third and final question for Mr. Fish.
Nick, one of the few proposals that has been, you know, concrete and that I've read in writing is a proposal to put together a new office of City Council Office of Economic Development. Tell me how that would work.
I proposed this two years ago when I was in another race, and I had lunch with Don Mazzati. In the course of the lunch, he told me that he had heard that one of my opponents had floated what he thought was one of the stupidest ideas he'd ever heard, and that was to bring the economic development piece from PDC over to City Hall. Well, one of the things I like about Don is he's plain-spoken, and it was me who actually proposed it. And the reason I proposed it is that we do not have, and with all due respect to my good friend Matt Hennessy who's here, we do not have adequate oversight over what Portland Development Commission does. I don't see why Matt Hennessy gets the benefit of high-level input on economic development and jobs when city commissioners don't get the same. So what I have proposed is to shift it over from PDC, along with the small-business advocacy piece, park it in the mayor's office, because the mayor is going to have to be our lead on this, and make sure that the city council gets the same quality of information that Matt Hennessy enjoys today.
Mr. Adams, you have the option of a 30-second rebuttal.
Well, I strongly disagree with that approach. I think that it really forecloses the option for regional economic development if it's parked in the mayor's office, if it's parked with city council. Portland Development Commission plays a vital role in economic development and job creation in the city, but it also plays a vital role in making the links with the region. And this is a regional economy. The day when Portland can just think that it can go its own way are over. We rely on the suburbs as much as they rely on us, and Nick's proposal would foreclose that. In terms of bringing more oversight to Portland Development Commission... In terms of bringing more oversight to Portland Development Commission, my proposal to major projects, they should go through them as well.
We now move to the final portion of the program. Three-minute closing statements from each candidate. We begin with Sam Adams.
A couple of weeks ago, Nick said something that has really stuck in my mind. He told an audience that running for city council is the hardest thing he's ever done. Well, it might be for Nick, but I've got to tell you, running for office isn't the hard part. It's mostly an exercise in talking and talking and raising money and raising money. What's harder is bringing people together who have different sides on tough issues and getting a solution and actually accomplishing things for the responsibilities that you have. And by these criteria, I think there's a real difference in the race. For the last dozen years, I've worked on some of the hardest issues facing Portland, and during some pretty tough times, true, much of it has been behind the scenes. That is the way I tend to work, bringing people together even when they disagree, but at the end of the day, we scaled some pretty high mountains. In the face of a national terrible economy battered by terrorism war, I worked with businesses, workers, and business associations, the people who actually are the backbone of our economy, to keep hundreds of jobs in Portland and to attract hundreds more. Because small business is such an important part of the economic engine for this city, I helped create the Small Business Advisory Council to ensure that they have a voice in city government before decisions are made. And I succeeded where others failed by bringing together business, arts, and local government to assist the local economy by completing the convention center, upgrading the Performing Arts Center, and encourage increased tourism without raising property taxes. I protected our local schools, not just as a cheerleader on the sidelines, but by playing a central role in preventing hundreds of teacher layoffs, maintaining a full school year, and keeping class sizes down. And I found a way to save millions of dollars in city government, cut red tape, and solve some of the most nagging complaints in dealing with city government. I think it's important to note that while I did some of these things as the mayor's chief of staff, I also did a lot more as a nonprofit leader and as a civic leader. I see many people in this room who have accomplished great things for their community without holding any public office, so I think comparing a list of real solid accomplishments for our community is a fair comparison. I want to bring more change to City Hall, but it takes being a city commissioner to get stuff done. The bottom line is, if you want to change in city government, you should look for someone who has actually made a difference instead of someone who just talks about being different. I've had the opportunity to work with and for Peter Defazio, Verikatz, and others. I am my own person with my own ideas, my values, who I am, and what I have done is what I offer to you, and I would be pleased to have you judge me on that basis, and I would be very honored to have your vote. Thank you.
Final statement from Nick Fish.
Well, thank you, City Club, for hosting this forum. I'm honored to stand before you today. And thank you, Patty, Maria, and Chapin, for giving me the time and the encouragement during this challenging campaign. There is a stark choice that voters will have this May eighteenth. If voters of Portland believe that the city is heading in the right direction and that my opponent, through his service to the mayor, has put us in the right direction, then he deserves a promotion. He deserves to get a promotion from his current job as chief of staff to the council. If, on the other hand, the voters believe that we need to fundamentally change the direction of this city, that we need to bring someone in to City Hall who has an experience outside of government, who brings seventeen years of experience in the business world and twenty-five years of experience in civic leadership, who has a demonstrated record of adding to our affordable housing inventory, who has worked with Dr. Tulon and PSU to build up the Hatfield School of Government, who is working today to find a creative solution to our affordable childcare crisis, and who believes passionately that open government, decisions made in public, is the best way to go, then I'm their candidate. I am thankful to each of you for coming today and for taking the time to listen to us. It's a well-kept secret today in Portland that there's an election. And one of the problems is the media has not covered this race, and I hope this forum helps change that. You can't get on TV unless one of us kills the other.
Don't tip me.
And the print media, which, depending on the reporter, does a better or worse job, still focuses too much on the horse race aspects. This is a two-person race, one of three races that are live races that'll be decided in May. I would hope that the public and the press pays more attention to what we're doing. I think you've seen today there's some clear differences. I would be honored to have your support, and I look forward to being your next city commissioner. Thank you very much.
Well, we considered whether or not it was necessary to have a five-second delay, and there at the end I was a little concerned, but I think we managed. I hope that this debate has been helpful in defining the differences between these two candidates. I know that that's often been reported in the press, that the differences are indefinable. I hope we've been able to help define them today. I'd like to thank the panel and our questioners, and especially thank the city council candidates. Good luck to both of you. I'd like to remind you of the upcoming program next Friday, Dr. Manuel Pastor, and then the next two Fridays are the continuing debates. So, thank you very much, and we are adjourned. Bye-bye.
Thank you. That was great. Good job. Thank you.
Good job. Thank you.
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 Thank you.